Satan is trying to lift me up. And he is saying that you are wise to speak up. And you should fight in right. And he is saying that you should speak the truth. That I have seen that thing by my own naked eyes. But in between of those two people. That I will die. I will bear. I will go in the part of humility. My Lord Jesus Christ was hundred percent right, but he did not speak up. And he became a slave. And he bare all those kinds of things which was laid upon me. And he had all kinds of dignity, honour and all those things, but he went under the ground. But I will go through the same way with the Lord Jesus Christ. If a person would have said like so. That the person would have died. And he would not have spoken up. And the other brother would have also seen. What happened to this brother? Oh, this brother has died. I am asking, he won't speak up. When I ask his name, he talks. And when I ask him, do you want tea? He will answer. But when on regards to debating about a point, he doesn't want to speak. If it would happen so for a week, month or six months, then maybe one person would have seen another person like Lord Jesus Christ. And if there is a discussion between a husband and a wife on regards to the colour of the tea, the word of God says that it happens so because of the pride. And I am not saying so, but you can read it from the book of Proverbs, chapter thirteen, verse ten. Please do read it quickly. And if you are elder of the church or you have got so much of knowledge in between husband and a wife, if there is a discussion on just regards to the colour of the coffee or tea, then remember that you have this kind of unseen pride in you. Let us imagine for a while that inside the heart of a wife and husband both have Lord Jesus Christ. And surely that the Lord Jesus Christ and Lord Jesus Christ would not have any kind of discussion. And that's why now today you are knowing it's all because of pride. And Satan is trying to lift you up by bringing some kinds of arguments. And beforehand, I said when Satan and his angel came down from heaven. And according to my religion, it says that there is thirty million gods. Even in the word of God, it is written that even Satan can change his form and look like angels and can deceive us also. Kyrie, please come to the epistle of first Corinthians. Chapter eleven, second Corinthians.
Chapter eleven.
Chapter eleven. And please everybody look. And all those fallen angels can come into the surface of earth and they can transform themselves into different forms. In chapter eleven, second Corinthians, verse fourteen and fifteen, it says, "And no wonder for Satan himself transformed himself into an angel of light. Therefore, it is no great thing if his ministers also transform themselves into ministers of righteousness, whose end will be according to their words." A person who has not received the Lord Jesus Christ and has not read the word of God, the fallen angels can come, transform into the form of godliness and they can deceive a person in the world. And we saw one thing, it is trying to lift up. Everybody do like this. It's not like doing so, but we are having, being puffed up from inside. It could be a person in the world or it could be a Christian that Satan would put some kind of air and make us full up or puffed up. All those persons who has not known the Lord Jesus Christ, they are doing all different kinds of ritual things. Maybe a Christian is sleeping till seven o'clock, but a person who has not known the Lord Jesus Christ, he wakes up three in the morning and he bathes. And he says that I have started my ritual from four and till until seven o'clock, I won't put a drop of water in my mouth. And the word of God says that why that person has become so serious? Kyrie, come to the epistle of Corinthians if you find the answer there. And chapter two, verse eighteen. And someone wakes up three in the morning and he bathes. And he goes and searches flowers and brings it back. And he starts his worshipping thing and starts from four and he only puts a drop of water in his mouth from seven. And even there, we can see some kind of humility. And maybe a Christian could be amazed by those things also. A person who is wearing a white or yellow dress has only put a drop of water at seven in the morning. But the word of God says that he is not worshipping God, but he is worshipping or following fallen angels. Chapter two, verse eighteen, here we find, it is written, "Let no one cheat you of your reward, taking delight in false humility and worship of angels, intruding into those things which he has not seen, vainly puffed up by his fleshly mind." What did the Satan do? And he lifted up. He is unaware of that. And because of wisdom. Because of the knowledge. Maybe he has got a knowledge of computer. Maybe he feels like he is a doctor. Maybe he feels like he is not an ordinary person, but he is an engineer. And maybe he looks on his paycheck and he is amazed and he is puffed up. And he has not done any kinds of sinful thing, but he is already puffed up. And he has unknowingly, he has been lifted up. He has been made proud. And again, already the God has become his enemy. And Christian is unaware that God has become his enemy. Christian is unaware of what kind of characteristics has the godly father has got. And here we find it is written, puffed up. And Satan can puffed up all the people of this world. And sometimes it can do so even Christians too. So please do remember, Satan is a six thousand years old champion. And a person who knows Bible and has established church, the Satan has puffed him up. Do you know that even Paul was also being puffed up? And apostle Paul was full of the knowledge of word of God and there were many churches established in this world. And in this spirit, he was lifted up into heaven also. And maybe he was having a tea at his own place. And Satan came and he was puffed up. You are not ordinary person. You have been to third heaven. And you have seen those things you cannot explain. You are almost writing thirteen books in the Bible. And you have done so great things. And apostle Paul was being puffed up. If Satan can puff up a person like apostle Paul, then who you and I are. And God saw those things. Oh, my son Paul has puffed up now. And because of pride, he was puffed up. And Bible says that because of the pride, God will become an enemy. And God will go against that person when he or she will become proud. And please do remember that when you become proud, then God will go away from you. And God has to do that thing that he has to make you fall down. Because that is the law of God. I have already told you that if you throw a stone, it will come down to the ground. We cannot bring the river which has gone downhill again uphill. We cannot, we cannot never change the law of God. And when apostle Paul was full of proud, then God became his enemy. And when it happens so, God had to push or fall, make Paul fall down. And God was full of love. He is my son. But he has gone away. And I have to speak against or be against him. How can I make him, bring him closer to me again? And I am going to take out the air. And if we take out the air from the balloon, if we pick the balloon. If we pick the balloon. What would it looks like? It was full in the beginning. And that's why God sent a gift to Paul from Amazon. In India, it comes from Amazon. And apostle Paul received a parcel. It came from Amazon. And it was sent from God. And Paul was very happy. And he excitedly opened, what is the gift inside? God gave me. It is written, God has given you. And God never gives us money. Whatsoever God gives us, he gives us a gift only. And when he opened the box, he saw that was a stick full of thorns. And please do remember, when a Christian is full of pride, God has to send a gift which is a stick full of thorns. And Kyrie, come to the epistle of Corinthians, chapter two. Second Corinthians, chapter twelve. And seven and eight, we will read. In order to keep a Christian humble, God has to send many different kinds of situations in his life. And unknowingly, when God looks down from heaven, you have become full of pride. And he found the gift which came from Amazon, there was a thorn and there was a stick. And that's why you may have some kind of different kind of financial or health or different kind of problem on regards to even wife or husband also, that has been sent from God. And when that thing came in the life of apostle Paul, he became humble. And sometimes before having, suffering from diarrhea, that person would say, I will lock him down in just one punch. After having four times diarrhea, he would come to humility and he says, please do take me to hospital. And please do remember, all the people of this world are worshipping or serving the angels, fallen angels, and they are being puffed up. And they have been lifted up and they have been puffed up. And even apostle Paul was puffed up too. And we have seen that a man, human can be puffed up because of wisdom and knowledge. And because of sometimes beauty also. And because of the knowledge of the word of God. And he or she can look at his own place, home, and he can be full, puffed up. And do you know how beautiful girl can be puffed up? That pride cannot be seen in the forehead. There is a beautiful lady, she has not killed or murdered or done anything wrong, but she can be full of pride. If some girl has nose problem, she won't go in front of the mirror just to check herself. But a beautiful girl will go in front of a mirror now and then. And unknowingly, she is feel full of proud. But when we know on the day that we have become proud. And you choose that I would go into the path of the humility which Lord Jesus Christ took. There would be no voice raised in your home. And there would be no complaint on the late breakfast. No, you won't be complaining where your socks has been misplaced. Neither there would be any voice raised in the church. And you will not give a single problem in the house of God and you will go and depart from this world. And that's why we saw because of wisdom and knowledge, people can become proud. Kyrie, come to the book of second Chronicles, chapter twenty-six. Kyrie, come to the book of second Chronicles, chapter twenty-six. Beforehand, we saw that the Lord has told us. And because of power also, a person or human being can become proud. Chapter twenty-six, please read verse sixteen. And here we find King Uziah become full of proud. I have been already telling from beforehand that when a person is full of pride, then this is the law of God which cannot be changed, that God will go against him and become, there will be a separation in between. Even it is like so that yesterday only you have given a great thing for the house of God and today if you are full of pride, then he has to go from you. Even with apostle Paul, he was, he became enemy, God became enemy. And because of the strength, King Uziah became full of pride. And this king, he became king and full of pride and he said, "I will go inside the temple and I will burn incense." And in many churches, because of post and position, there is, there is fighting. Or a person will say, "I should have been there," or other person will say, "Maybe he shouldn't be there in this way." And sometimes even the church is saying that is the right thing. And the person is saying, "What to do, brother? I don't want to do, but this is, this has happened so." But eventually, he has the desire to go there. And he has that kind of desire. Unknowingly, he is following just a duplicate Jesus. Our Lord Jesus Christ has not become like pastor, elder, bishop, archbishop, pope in this way. And in some churches, people argue that they have to become from pastor to elder and from elder, they have to become irreverent also. But our Lord Jesus Christ, he came down, down and eventually he went under the ground. And if a Christian would have understood that place. If you would say that I will go that place. And maybe all the Christians of that church would have seen. Maybe they would have seen that we have seen Jesus, we have seen Jesus. And in the first century, the people of this world used to say like this. Oh, how much there is oneness in this Christian people? And but the people of this world in the recent times say like this. The Christians are so fighting today in the church, in the church. And if we know the truth, that we should go and cry. If we not shed our tears in our pillow, then maybe in the coming of the Lord, we will be left behind. And in order to explain all about this theme, it will take almost more than a week. And just we have talked only about introduction only. And I am telling you that when a person is full, becomes proud, then God will become his enemy and that person had to be separate from God. In second Chronicles, chapter twenty-six, verse eighteen, the, all the people tried to tell the king, "King, this is not your job, don't do so." In verse nineteen, Uziah became more angry. And while he was angry, he went into the temple to burn incense. And while he was inside the temple, in the forehead of King Uziah, there was a leprosy scene. And we know that a person who has a leprosy cannot go and meet God. And in verse twenty, we find that there was a, he became leprous on his forehead. And we all will read verse twenty-one. King Uziah was a leper until the day he is there. He dwelt in an isolated house because he was a leper, but he was cut off from the house of the Lord. And he was cut off from the house of God means he was separated from God. And without killing or murdering someone or stealing or any kind of sin, a Christian can become separated from God. And we have seen beforehand that because of the beauty, that pride came into that angel. We'll just see one more thing and we are going to close. Kyrie, read first Timothy, chapter six, verse seventeen. And because of the riches, also we become full of pride. For example, you may have lots of money in your bank and already God has become your enemy. It is not a sin to have money. It is not a sin to have a good car. And it is written so that the Lord can give us the good things of this world so that we may use those things. Chapter six, verse seventeen, please. Surely God can give us car, horse or any kind of houses, but unknowingly Satan can come and make us puffed up on regards to saying that nobody has a house like yours. And if we don't know how to serve the Lord with the riches we have, then a person can die full of pride. I have told you beforehand that there is one person in India, he is a very spiritual person. And I have told you that both husband and wife used to go for a walk and they used to come back home. And while coming back, they used to see many beggars. And they don't have a place to sleep, they don't have clothes to wear or to cover themselves. And while there was rain, both of the servants of God would come quickly inside the houses. And the Lord told in their hearts. And he said like, "Lord, I have got a house to stay, but these beggars don't have any place to stay." And within his own heart, he said like this. And I'm just having this kind of feeling or thinking that I will go into my house and wash myself with warm water. And he said, turning towards his wife and said, "Wife, help me because the pride is starting to come upon me." And the wife said, "What happened, what happened?" And I'm remembering or thought is coming to my mind now and again that I will, I have a house, I have a house and I will go in that house and I will bathe myself, wash myself up with warm water. And he stood there, standing, they both prayed. And he said like, "If, Lord, I have a pride on regards to the house which I have." That when I reach my house, let that house be burning. And I love you so much that being heated up by the fire warmth of that burning house, I will give you thanks. And he emotionally detached on regards to those things and he prayed like that. And because as he went after praying that, even the house was burning, but he was becoming, he has made himself strong in the Lord again. And even in your emotions only if you have not prayed on regards to the houses or different kinds of luxurious thing, that maybe Satan could make you puffed up in those things. When we have affliction and suffering, or we can say when Israelites came through the way of wilderness. And suffering means, as I have given an example, when a person has... And suffering means, as I have given an example, when a person has diarrhea.
And diarrhea unuparsa garibunuparsa Bible lehage chaina.
And it is not written so in the Bible that we have to suffer through diarrhea or we have to become poor.
Tera permesale kam sekam dukha unda, paristhi unda, kasta uncha, tyu namrata la daran garasbala, samjana karano vaycha vyavastaviyunku kitabna.
In the book of Deuteronomy, the Lord has made Israelites to go through so that they may be able to remember how it is, it feels like when they have to go through those kind of suffering.
Aba Bible ma jaan namrata mane shabda uncha, tehi chausav tira kani tira gamand manle lehage uncha.
And when in the Bible we find a word humble or humility, in and around close by, we find the word proud or pride.
And tyu ji bujne Christian le mathe nikalno saksa, dhyan garani mathe likano saksa.
And only a Christian who is very watchful can bring all those kind of things.
Agi male batayi namrata ko viparich shabda, gamandho, gamand ko viparich shabda namrata ho.
And I've already told that is obviously word to humility is pride and pride is humility.
Aba vyavastaviyunku kitab aata dekshatrapad.
And Kyly, come to the book of Deuteronomy, chapter 8, and we are reading verse 3.
Avale uzaadistan ma Israelier la hina ko samjana karano vay.
And here we find that the Lord made them walk to the wilderness so that they can remember.
Aata dekshatrapad, timile tya sampona baato ko samjana garno.
And.
Jun baato ma timila namrata liavnalay, timila janchera, timra hirdai ma ke cha, timila ma ka agiaru palan ghar cha, ki gardayna shujjanna lay, paramprabhu timra permesali, chalis barsavari timilai, uzaadistan mada vaira, dorayavda ilay janvay.
Verse 2, and you shall remember that the Lord, your God, led you all over these forty years in the wilderness to humble you and test you, to know what was in your heart, whether you would keep his commandments or not.
And tin padma bani, holi timila namrata liavnalay.
And in verse 3 also, we find that he made them humble.
Tera sabjane malayanos, yenri.
Everybody look here.
Tera ekharapadma jada kari, hosya, natra kani, waaka agiaru, waaka niyamaru, waaka bidyaru, jo aajma timel agi gare shu, palan nagarati, timile paramprabhu apna permesala birshala.
In verse 11, it says, beware that you do not forget the Lord, your God, by not keeping his commandments, his judgment and his statutes, which I command you today.
Kasari unasaksa esh to bharapadma natra, jabak hara timitriptha avla, ramra ramra ghararu bana ra, tinma basavla.
How it can happen so in verse 12, it said, lest when you have eaten and are full and have built beautiful houses and dwell in them.
Tera padma, and jabat timra gai vastururu, bhedaba khairu, ganthima vaddlan, jabat timra chaadi resun vaddlan, tava timra savetho kuru vaddlan.
And verse 13, and when your hearts and your flocks multiply and your silver and your gold are multiplied and all that you have is multiplied.
Lachodapad sabjane milai padosho.
Let us read. When your heart is lifted up and you forget not the Lord, your God, he brought you out of the ladder of his from the house of bondage.
Eno shavata ma chalpavnuva, atya vanda, chori vanda, evichar vanda, thulupap, gamandho.
And now we have come to the conclusion and known that the pride is bigger sin than adultery, murder or stealing.
Keti gayrukara Bible lai ponsho.
And we find this kind of deep truths in the word of God.
Jabak Christian lai, satan le gamandhi banaavsa.
When a Satan makes a Christian full of pride.
Christian la thaundayana.
A Christian is unaware of that.
Satan le bantsa.
Satan is, Satan says.
Mire kam sakyo.
My work is done.
Amire disturb garivastina.
And I don't, I won't disturb anymore.
Ki gara ra isto yele.
What you have done and come here.
Amire jasthi manchala fly dien.
I have just puffed him up little bit.
Gaalam flak hoyna.
And he has not puffed up in the cheek.
Amire ghar vitre fly diara agate lai.
And while he was inside his own home, I have puffed him up.
Mire kam sakyo.
I have done my job.
Kina, kina.
Why, why, why?
Permesaro uska jagadha va, permesar dusmane vayalna va.
Because God has become angry and has become his enemy now.
Pulak gamandhi bana dienchu, permesar dusman ununcha, itiba malai kam pugyo.
And I will make him full of pride and God will become his enemy, that's enough for me.
Aba jatini Bible paduski, family prayer gares, permesar dusman vaysa esha.
And no matter how much he prays, does family pray, already God has become his enemy.
And holi family prayer garsa, Bible padasa, church ansa ke mudayana.
And he does family pray, he prays and he goes to the house of God, nothing happens there.
Pulak kei bhakashto lakcha.
And he feels like something is happening.
Tere church manjanda agi ko, maate ko manchala, mountain top ma poeshto bhagovala.
And maybe it is like so that drunkard person who feels like he's on the mountain top when he is drunk.
Kati jana ta buda budi gadi me chadne vithi, satan tya ayalcha.
And sometimes while just husband and wife in the car, Satan comes there, right there.
Buda le bantsa, kaa gaako, budi le bantsa, kaa, church gaako, church gaako, dilavay sakyo.
And husband will say, where are you going? And wife will say, we are going to church.
Buda le bantsa, era ta yen, dasvay sakhi, church ko time vay sakyo.
And husband will say, look at the time, it's already 10.
Chito gara vane ko, chito gara vane ko.
And I'm telling you to do quickly.
Dhihheptu tesavana.
And two times the husband will say so.
Dhihke pala ma ta buda amrisaya.
And on the third time, husband became angry.
And gadi vitra pashe.
And he got inside the car.
Khoi paniko potalcha, khoi.
He said, where is the water bottle?
Yo manchay toni khoi, agi banegana male?
And I've already told you, where is the water bottle?
Kaa gaako, seva gaako, seva.
And where are they going? They are going to the house of God.
Satan gadi vitra vasera diskastive gare idyo.
And Satan has already entered into the car and they have started argument between them.
And bantsa, bye bye, jau jau, chaut jau, mire kam sakyo.
And Satan will say, bye bye, my job is done, now you can go to the house of God.
Jashla satan ko yuktiru tha chaina, tesla satan le boora vitra alsa, they deserve to be deceived, they are deserved to be put into the sack.
Oh, jashla ishita chaina, abu satan ko yuktiru isana, unar se boora vitra, alina like shu, ani nu unira halinsane.
Tera tejaga arra pauna ayam, phiri buda budi bolna thalcha.
If suddenly a guest comes and both of husband and wife starts to talk.
Acting, acting ko jindagi.
A life of full of act.
Naatak garne jindagi.
A life full of drama.
Tava dekhna va, dhansampathiko kaan lekada gamanavda recha.
And you have seen that because of riches also, pride comes in, can come in our life.
Aba ami sahat ban karun parla.
Maybe we have to close now.
Aba parivarikshak apni cha.
And there's a family pray also.
Kati vishakuncha, ma ta time ko patay va, saade chavam, parivarikshak saade chavam cha, hoyna? La, parivarikshak apni ami continue garam.
And we are going to go straight into family pray.
Aba, esayla ami lagatar vada vade javnu, epicu patri maavnos, parivarikshak laagi.
Kyly, come to the epistle of Ephesians for a family pray.
Epicu patri duyade.
Kyly, come to the epistle of Ephesians, chapter 2.
Duyade maavda, ami abayu vaspat sumancha.
And chapter 2, there's 22 verses.
Aba ami, bhaile pad dinas tay buda.
Yes.
And timiru lai artha aprat paap hurma marekharu lai, wale jibhit parit dinu bhaayo, ki paap mai timiru bithiko samay ma, yes sanshar ko riti anushar, akash ko adhikar ko sak, artha tes atma anushar hirdyo, dastle ahileti agyanamane santan hurma kam garsa. Tini hor kei bijchma, hami sabai le shari ra man ka lalsaha ru pura gare dey, bithiko samay ma, afna shari ka kuicha hurma, jeevan bitayon, ra sobha bai le, hami pani aru jasthi, krot ka santan diyon, tara permesor, jo daya garnama dhani hununcha, afnu mahan preem ko karun le, dastwara, wale hamilai preem gurnu bhaayo, hami aprat hurma marekai bhaeta pani, wale hamilai krist sangai, jibhit parnu bhaayo. Anugrali timirle mukti paya chow, and hamilai sang sangai boraera, uthano bhaayo, ra kristya summa swargya sthan hurma, sang sangai basanu bhaayo. Kristya summa, hami tarfa bhaiko, waha ko daya dvara, bachiaavne yug hurma, waha ko anugro ko apahar dhan, dekhaunaka nimti. Tineki timirle viswaas dvara, anugrali mukti paya chow, and yo timiru afi baato ko hoyna, yo permesor ko dan ho, kaam huru baato hoyna, natra ta kasi le gamand garnesha. Tineki hami asal kaam hurka niti, kristya summa shree jana gareyaka, akha hatka karigari hong, jun kaam hurma, hamile hinuparsa banera, permesor le, agi baatey, tini lai, tim lai, tayar parnu bhaiko cha. Kristi hotira, anny jati huru ekchan, esay karun samjana gara, bithiko samay ma, timiru shari anushar, anny jati huru thiyo, and shari ma hatle gareyeko khatna, bani ne dvara, timiru bina khatna ka bani thiyo. Tes samay ma, timiru krist bhiin thiyo, israel ko nagarikta baata alag, pratigya ka baacha huru baata parai, aasana bhaika, ra sanshar ma permesor rahit thiyo, tara apata kristya summa timiru, jo bithiko samay ma tada thiyo, krist ko ragat dvara, najik pariega chow. Tineki waha hamra mel mila, bhanuncha, wale dubai lai ek banaavnu bhaayo, ra bijchko alag parne bhittha bhatkai dinu bhaayo. And mel milaap gare ra, afi ma, dui jana baata utta naya manis, kristi garna ka nimti, wale biddi vidan hurma bhaika, agyar ko vyavastha, artha shatru ta, afne shari ma metai dinu bhaayo. And krus dvara, evta shari ma, dubai lai, permesor sangha, milaap garaunaka nimti, wale shatru talai, tes krus dvara, nas garenu bhaayo. And wale aaya timir lai, jo tada ma thiyo, ra unhi lai, jo najik ma thiye, mel milaap ko susamachar sunavnu bhaayo. Tineki waha dvara ney, hamiru dubai, evta atma dvara, pita kaha pugna ponsho. Es karun, obauso timiru parai ra, parde shi huru hoyna, tara pavitra jahn huru sangha, sangi nagarik huru hong, ra permesor ka ghara naka hau, and timiru, prerith huru, ra bhavishya vakta huru ko jag mati banaiega chow. Dasko kuna dhunga chahi, yes krist afi hununcha, jasma sarah bhavan, jamma mile ra, prabhu ma evta pavitra mandir banna lai, bhardei jansha. Jasma timiru pani atma dvara, permesor ko vasistan banna lai, ek saath bani dei jansha. Hey ukra, paami chhot kari ma, epicu patri duyade ko, atra noopadla dhyan dinsho.
And in summary, we'll just read from chapter 2, verse 8 and 9.
Aba Bible ma batayi kocha, permeso chittinada kurama sidha hununcha.
And in the word God says that God is perfect in three things.
Vyavastaviyunku kitab, bhatti shade.
Kyly, come to the book of Deuteronomy, chapter 32.
Kripa kholos, chite sakincha, vyavastaviyunku kitab, bhatti shade.
Kyly, come to the book of Deuteronomy, chapter 32.
Bhatti shadeko char pad.
And we are reading chapter 32, verse 4.
Mo paila line parde shu, waha chatta nuncha, waha ko kam sidha cha.
And here it says that he is the rock and he is perfect.
Bhajan ko kitab, unaisadeko sat pad.
Book of Psalm, chapter 19, verse 4.
Kasari padosho Bhajan ko kitab, unaisadeko sat pad.
Abega pardon, chapter 19, verse 7, Kyly, please read someone.
Paramprabhu ko vyavastha sidha cha. Avayas duita kurasidha, amire payo.
And here we find two things is perfect.
Permesor ko kam sidha cha.
The work of God is perfect.
Yes, sristi ma bhaiko kune pani kaam ma, permesor lai, tabali yahan galti garunva, sano kasari thaapna, bana sakdayana.
And nobody can complain or say that the work which you have done in your creation, you have not done correctly here or there.
And permesor ko vyavastam sidha cha, jasta ami deksho, wale jonce, tharna maina, garam maina, full fullne season ra liavununcha, sapai kurama ko niyam, ami ponsho, tienri.
And here he has done everything perfectly, even in the seasons that Lord makes things all good.
And permesor ko niyay, jab waha niyay garuncha, tedi vela waha ko vyavastha le, amire sathik kaam garay, ami deksho.
And we see that when God judges, the law of God does that judgment perfectly.
And Bhajan ko kitab, achara dekshatrapadma, ami arkopni sita kura ponsho.
And we find another perfect thing in the book of Psalm, chapter 18, verse 13.
Waha ko baato sidha cha.
And here we find his way is perfect.
Aba sabjane mire pichari vanas, permesor ko kam sidha cha.
Permesor ko kam sidha cha.
Vyavastha sidha cha.
Vyavastha sidha cha.
Waha ko baato sidha cha.
Waha ko baato sidha cha.
Aba esh to permesor ko vyavastha, niyam pani sidha, waap pani sidha, waha ko kam pani sidha, tara manchay chi asidha vay.
And we see, we saw here that work of God is perfect, law is perfect, his way is perfect, but man has become imperfect.
And ami paltanunna na, aip ko kitab ma leyasa, teshade ma, adarmi manchay kaam vada sidha huncha ra.
And chapter 23, a book of Job, there it is written, how can an imperfect man can become a perfect man?
Tes kanta esh to asidha manchala, permesale aja mukti dine vichar garu vay.
And that's why to this imperfect human being, God has a desire to give salvation.
And yo mukti chi wale, aja, man, permesale manchala, dan sorup dine vichar garu vay.
And God desired that he will give this salvation as a gift to human being.
Aba sabjane dhyan nire sunos, manchay asidha.
A man, man is imperfect.
Manchay paapli gada patit vay.
Because of sin, he has fallen.
Ukaila permesangha pugna sakdayana.
He cannot go too near to God.
And permesale sanshar ko, sathav vada, israeli jati chunera, lo, mo vyavastha dinchu, timru palan gare ra, vyavastam dinu vay.
And from all the human mankind, God chose Israelites and they, God gave them the law of God.
And Hebrew ko kitab ma, ami sathade ma paltanunna na, tian lehage kocha, vyavastha le bani manchala sidha parun sakina.
And even book of Hebrews, chapter 7, there it is written, even the law cannot make people or human being perfect.
Tes ko matab sidha permesor ko, asidha manchay kasari jani ava.
Or we can say, how can an imperfect man go closer to a perfect God?
And male vyavastha dien, vyavastalan timile palan garan sakina.
I have given you the law, but you are not able to keep up to the law.
Aba matime la anugra dinay shu.
But now I am going to give you grace.
Aba anugra la esari bujnos.
And let us understood grace in this way.
Paapi manchay talapirti vitalma cha.
That our sinner is in the ground of the earth.
And permesale ununcha esh to paapi bhaeta, bani matime la dan dine janshu, kee chiz dine janshu.
Even you are in a sinful condition, I want to give you some gift.
Tera sart cha.
And there is a condition.
Gamandhi vayanthaapna sakdayana tyu.
That you cannot receive if you are full of pride.
Tereka da probi sumasi aarakrusma mordu vay.
And that's why Lord Jesus Christ came and he died in the cross.
Gadi nuva, bauri utnu vay.
And he was buried and he was resurrected.
Manchay ko paap ko bill bhuktan gardinu vay.
And in order to pay the bill of the sin which was for human.
And male bhanuncha, matime lai, mukti dine janshu.
And the Lord said that I want to give you salvation.
Yezchi dan ho.
And this is a gift.
And tyu dan thaapna kala ki manchay namravunu parsah.
And in order to receive that gift, a person, human being must be humble.
Prabhu ma paapi ho.
And yes, Lord, I'm a sinner.
Amire sanche chore kochu, dhaate kochu.
Yes, it is true that I have sinned and I have said lies also.
Amire murthi bujagare kochu.
I have done a work, I have worship idols also.
Amire kam sekam, haan bolo muklaa kochu.
And I have spoken against my father and mother.
And permesale anugra dharati, manchala mukti dine jannuncha.
And through grace, the Lord wants to give that salvation.
Anugra ko vyakhyakarun parani, anugra chi permesarada apna amne sahatao.
And if we have to explain grace, it is the help that comes from God himself.
Phiri duriyara bancha, Hebrew ko kitab le bancha, anugra bane ko kee bini hoyna, permesor ko sahatao.
And I'm telling again repeatedly that in the book of Hebrews, it says, grace is nothing, but it is the help that comes from God above.
And permesale sahatadharati, anugradharaji, mukti taladinuncha paapi lai.
And through the help of God from heaven, God is giving that salvation to a sinful person.
Tera agi male tabala batayi, sanshar ko sarah manchay gamandle, fullle ko uncha.
But I have already told, all the people of this world is filled with pride.
Dhanko gamandle, vidya ko gamandle, buddhi ko gamandle, shakti ko gamandle.
And because of the wisdom, knowledge and riches and power, they are filled with pride.
And swarga dutku puja gare ra, mo, aja dharmi shu, bane prakarli, manchay fullle ko uncha.
And they are worshipping the fallen angels, yet they are being puffed up, saying that they are worshipping God.
त्यसकाले तो मान्छे आठ पत्थरमा छ, परमेश्वरले अनुग्र द्वारा, सायता द्वाराजी मुक्ति दिन चाहेको।
And that's why in verse eight, we find that through grace, the Lord has given us the salvation which is the gift of God.
माले थाह्छ, प्रभुला ग्राउन्ड गर्नुक्रेम, तिमी नम्रत चाहिस।
We know to accept the Lord Jesus Christ, we need humility.
गुड़ा टेक्नु पर्छ, पसदा बनु पर्छ।
We need to come into our knees and we have to repent.
त्यसकाले नम्रत चाहिस।
And we surely need humility for that.
अनि अन्त, अन्तमाते मान्छे नजिक जानु सक्छ।
And then only a human being can go near to God.
अगि मेरे तवाला बताए, त्याँ फिर तरजुले काम गरियाछ?
And I have already told you that the will balance will automatically work in that situation.
दुए देखो आठ पत्थरमा, अनुग्र द्वारा मुक्ति पाउछौ, वनेकोस्तान, नौ पत्थरमा छ, गमण्डी बनाउने के त्याँ?
And two, verse, chapter two, verse, it says that through grace we have been saved, but in verse nine, it says that let's no one boast on that thing.
तेलेकदा गरीब बन्दा गरीब मान्छे लाई पनि फुटानी देखाउन्छ, मुक्रण गर्दिनुहुन्छ।
And that's why a very poorest of the poor will even also say and boast that I won't accept the Lord.
विभिन्न प्रकारको गमण्डी मान्छे फुल्ले को हुन्छ।
Because of different kinds of pride, they are being puffed up.
फेरि पहिला करण्डी एकदैको छब्बीस, सत्ताइस पत्थरमा आइपाउछौं।
And when we go back in first Corinthians, chapter one, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
त्याँ पनि लिखिएको छ, तिमीले गरीब बनेर, आफुलाई मानिल्यो, तिमीले आफु कंगाल बनेर मानिल्यो, अन्पड बनेर मानिल्यो। आत्मिक प्रकारले जिम गरीब रह्छु, वनेर मानिलिन चाह्न्छु, वनेर मुक्ति छ बन्छतैन?
And even there, we find if you consider yourself foolish, unwise, and you are spiritually very poor, then you can receive salvation.
अयुक्रा, आइम पढ्यालाई एकदैको छब्बीस, सत्ताइस, अठाइस पत्थरमा आइपाउछौं।
And chapter one, we are going to read quickly, twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
छब्बीस पत्थरमा धेरेजना बुद्धी मान, बल वन, धेरेजना खानदानी छैन, मानेको छ, आफुला नम्रत त लियार, मेरो बुद्धीले काम नगर्नेरस्स, मेरो धनले काम नगर्नेरस्स, वनेर नम्र आउनु।
And here we find that many who are not mighty, wise in the flesh, which can say that he is or she is making himself humble.
अनि अठाइस पत्थरमा आइपाउछौं, म माथि धनी भयता, पनि नीत रह्छु, पापले गर्दा तल्लु दसामा रह्छु, वनेर मानिल्यो, पनि माते, यो नम्रताको कारणको मुक्ति पाउछा।
And even he is rich, but he considers himself as a poor, because of that humility, only through the grace of God, he can receive salvation.
तर ग्रण गरेन आवने चाहिए।
If he or she won't accept the salvation.
किना ग्रण नगरेको?
And why you have not accepted the Lord?
उन्तीस पत्थर सब्जनमा मेरो पढ्नु।
And let us read altogether, verse twenty-nine.
कि वहाँका सामु पुनाइ ग्रणले गमण गर्न पाउँ। एनस्, गमण्डी नम्रत बराबर जान्छ।
And pride and humility goes hand in hand.
अयुक्रा तमाली पुझ्नुहै?
And you must have understood this.
अब इतो पत्थर, इसको किताब उन्तीस देहको तेहीस पत्थर पढ्नुस्?
Kindly come to the book of Proverbs, chapter twenty-nine, verse thirteen, it says.
Twenty-three, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, chapter twenty-nine, it says, a man's pride will bring him low, but the humble in spirit will retain honor.
फिर नेपालीमा पढ्यासु? उन्तीस तेस? उन्तीस तेस।
मान्छे को गमण्डी तेस्ताई तल्ला जार्ने छ, तर नम्र आत्मा भएको मानिस्ले आदर पाउने छ।
अब सब्जनै तानुस्, मलाई विस्तारीसँगले फिर एनुस्, कब्सकिन आट्यू?
Please look here.
नम्र भए, पनि परमेश्वरले ऑटोमेटिक अफ़या उजालनुहुन्छ।
If we become humble, then automatically the Lord will lift us up.
तर गमण्डी चिजैले, मान्छे लाई तल्ला जार्छ।
But because of pride, the human, we will come down.
अब गमण कसरी आउन्छ?
How will pride come?
हाम्रो न्यूमाते एफीसीको पत्री दुए देहै?
And we are just coming to Ephesians, chapter two only.
तर आमी गमण्डी नम्रतालाई अध्ययन गर्दैछौं।
But actually, we are looking unto pride and humility.
माले प्रार्थना गर्दैथै, प्रभु यो विषय त्याँसँ, तबन्दे गहिदिन्छ पत्थर।
And I was praying, Lord, show me if there is a verse in there.
अदर्दै एफीसीको पत्री देख्नु पत्थरमा गमण बन्ने सब्द आए।
And in chapter two, verse nine, we find the word their pride or boast.
अब तबर याद गनुस्, फेरिमा म बताउदैस्यू, गमण आउने वितिकै, मान्छे जारियाछ, परमेश्वरले विरुद्ध गरियानुहुन्छ।
Again, I'm telling you, when the pride comes, a human being will come down and he becomes enemy of God.
एनस्, यो सिदान्त हो।
This is law of God.
अब डानिलको किताबमा आउनुस्, पाँच देहमा।
Kindly come to the book of Daniel, chapter five.
डानिलको किताब पाँच देह।
Daniel, chapter five.
पाँच देहको कसैले विस्पत्त पढ्यासु?
Please read verse twenty.
रुदै अहंकाली फुल्यो, र वहाँको आत्मा गमण्डी कठोल भयो, तब वहाँ आख्नो राज सिंहासन बाट ओरलिनु भयो, ओरोरालिनु भयो।
यानरी, बेलसजर राजाको बारेमा कुरा गरेको।
And here we find, it is, it is a thing about King Belsa.
यो राजा पनि केही कारणले गर्दा गमण्डी भासा।
And this king has also become full of pride.
अनि गमण्डी बनेवितिकै, यो मान्छे तल्ला जारियाल्यो।
And immediately, when he was full of pride, he became, he came down.
जब मान्छे कृष्ण पनि गमण्डी हुन्छ, चाल्न पायू पासु इस्तो भएसैको हुन्छ।
Even when a Christian unknowingly becomes pride, unknowingly he has already become like a beast.
अनि जब गमण्डी हुन्छ, महिमा खुशियो वनेको छ, एकाइस पत्थरमा, आज़ा उपसुको दर्जामा जार्यो।
And verse twenty-one, it is written that the glory has been taken and he has become like an animal.
त्यसकाले तो माले बताउदैस्यू, गमण बन्ने सब्दको छोछोमा नम्रता लेखेको हुन्छ।
And that's why I've been telling you that in near to the word pride, the humility word will come, or it would be vice versa.
लोकेनर्स वाइस्पत्त पढ्नुस्?
And please do read, to confirm verse twenty-two.
अनि तपाई चाहि वहाँकै छोरा, हे बेलसजर, यो सब कुरा जानेर पनि, तपाइले आख्नो रुदै नम्रत त लियाउनु भएको छैन?
एनस्, गमण को विपरीत सब्द नम्रत हो।
Here we find the opposite word of pride is humility.
अमा तवाला एडाकुरा बताउछु, धेरेचोटी चौज पनि नम्रता बन्ने विषयमा ठाकीको हुन्छ।
And in many times, even church has been deceived on regards to this subject of humility.
संसारमा, बाहिर प्रभुला नपाको मान्छे को, नम्रताको डेफिनेशन इस्त्रकारको हुन्छ।
A person who has not been saved in the world, who, he or she's, the definition of humility is like this.
In the world?
In the, in the world.
इत्ती भाइकर पढेको की, तर गरीब रुक बिस्वंगर, मजाले खाना खान्छ बन्छ मान्छे?
He is so highly educated, but he goes in the midst of poor people and he eats with that.
अनि चौजमा पनि कति छोटी नम्रताको गलत डेफिनेशन हुन्छ।
And sometimes even in the church also, they define humility wrongly.
किन्मान्छे लाई, जे कुरो पनि भयानगर्स, संसारको स्थर बड़ा, संसारको स्टैंडर्ड बगरेको हुन्छ।
Because people try to explain all those things in, in the standard of the world.
म बनि रुसरुमा कृष्ण आउदा, फेरि मलाई कति जानले चौजमा मान्छे लाई बन्नै?
In the beginning of my Christian days, even I was told in the church also.
उच्च इंजीनियर हो, तरम टॉयलेट सफागर्दैसैनुस्?
And he is an engineer, he's an engineer, but yet he is cleaning the toilet.
डॉक्टर हो, तर पनि मेटो छौंदैसैनुस्?
He is, he's a doctor, but he is laying the mats here.
तर मलाई मान्छे लाई बनेको डेफिनेशनलाई, आत्तो पत्ता चिज त पुढ्डैन्त्यू?
But I was not convinced by the definition given to me by the people.
पाइलोट, जस्तो मान्छे भार बनि, याँ टॉयलेट सफागर्दैस?
And he was, he's a pilot, but yet he is cleaning here the toilet.
अन्त माले एकजना ब्रदरलाई बनि, उले घरमा जे टॉयलेट सफागर्दैने, किया पाइलोटले?
I said to one brother, will not that pilot clean his toilet at his own home?
अच्छा, मलाई बन्नुस्, गुरु द्वारामा टॉयलेट सफागर्छ, गर्दैने बन्नुस्?
Please tell me.
अन्दाविको गुरु द्वारामा?
Even in Guru Dwarah, will they clean the toilet?
की भिवरी आएको हुन्छ, बन्नुस्?
Will they do all around the ground?
कोइतो कोइ बोल्दैन?
Yes, they do clean.
प्रभुला नपाको बाहिर मान्छे लाई, भिवरी गु, अटाटी गरेको हुन्छ, के टॉयलेटमा गर्छ, बन्नुस्? गुम्पा, मंदिर, मस्जिद, जाइ जानुस्, टॉयलेट सफागर्छ।
Yeah, everywhere you go, in mosque or any temple, they have toilets and they clean.
त्याँ पनि कारपेट छौंछ?
And even they lay the mats down there also.
पंजाबको गुरु द्वारामा गव्ने, अमृतसत्मा गव्ने, हजार-हजार जानेको भारदा हुन्छ, मान्छे?
And if you go in Guru Dwarah, in Punjab, they will do the dishes of thousands of people there.
तेला नम्रत बन्दैन?
And we don't say that thing as humility.
अनि मलाई कति छोटी चौजमा मान्छे, मुट्टू मान्छे, थुलू मान्छे, डॉक्टरले पानी बाड्दै गरेको दिखायू, त कति छाल नम्र?
And people showed me, a doctor distributing waters, and they told me what a humble person he is.
तर म तवाला बताइसू, नम्रत?
But I'm going to tell you what real humility means.
साच्यो नम्रत, उनकलाई खलखल पछिनाउछ।
To become a true, to have true humility, we will, we should be sweating.
कसरी बताउन्छु, म ओके न?
I'm going to tell you how.
एडाकुरा मान्छे लाई, देखाउनुको लागि, चौजमा विभिन्न प्रकारले पानी बाड्ला, खोरसनी बाड्ला, कारपेट छौला, टॉयलेट पनि सफागर्ला।
A person may come into the house of God and he may lay mats, distribute salt and chili and do different kinds of activity in the house of God.
तर साच्यो नम्रत, नम, मनमा हुन्छ, मन्न?
But the true humility comes in the heart.
तपाइले कुनै दिन डाइनिंग टेबलमा बसेर, तपाइको घरको बेडरूममा बसेर, अर्का घरको कुरा गरेको छ, किसनै, ईमानदारी पुर्वक, छातीमा हात राखर, आफलाई बन्नुस्?
Honestly, keep your hands in your heart and say to yourself, have you ever talked on regards to other people while sitting in your sitting room or while laying in your own bed?
मलाई बन्नु पर्दैन, तपाइले आफ़ाफ़ि शोष्नुस्?
You don't have to tell me, please think about yourself within your heart.
अर्काको घरको आकिदा जिलिमा कुरा गर्नु, अर्को कृष्णको प्रतिष्ठा मर्यादालाई, अनन गर्नु, बनेको छ, मान्छे मार्नु जस्तै?
And if we are talking about the character of another Christian, it is similar to like murdering a person.
बाइबलको पत्थर बन्ने, संडिस्कूल टीचर गर्ने, कन्वोकेशन चलाउने देखिले, हरेक मान्छे लाई, जीवनकालमा अर्को कृष्णको बैकबाइटिंग गरेको हुन्छ।
And surely, a person could be a Sunday school teacher, a person who can, who says the word in the congregation, must have talked or backbit about other Christians in his lifetime.
तर जस्को कुरा गर्नुहै, तपाइले त्याँडा उठ्ना सक्नु पर्छ, उठ्नु पर्छ पहिला तपाइ?
And if you have talked about someone, you have to stand up right at that very point.
अनि बुढ़ीले सोच्छ, तपाइ कहाँ जाना आट्नुहै?
And if a wife asks you, where are you going now?
बुढ़िया टाटा, गाको मत्यमान्छे, घरमा गाको, जस्को बैकबाइटिंग गरेको गाको म आव?
And, bye-bye, I'm going to that person's house, whose, whose backbit I have just done now only.
त्यो घरमा टप्प, कर्नस्?
And you have to go and knock the door.
अरि ब्रदर एति बन्ने तपाइ कबड़ा आउनुहै?
Brother, why have you come this late?
अहिले एक्सिन अगाडियो, अष्टिको दिन पनि हो, अष्टिक अब, तब, तबाइरको बैकबाइटिंग गरे, आमिले?
And just before, only a week ago, and a few weeks ago, we have talked, backbited.
तपाइको छोराकम, कुरा गर्यो, बुढ़ीकम, कुरा गर्यो।
And we have talked about your son, and we have talked about your wife also.
छोरीको बारेमा तमाले इस्तो, इस्तो, इस्तो तो बन्नैयो, निप्कै पनि बन्नै तमाले?
About daughter, I have talked this and that also.
ट्राई गर्यैनुस्, पछिनाउसके, आउदैन?
Please try this once and you will see if you would be sweating or not.
ट्राई गर्यैनुस्, लाइफमा एक।
Please try.
त्यो घरमा गर, तपाइले मापमाप्ना सक्नु पर्छ।
You have, you should be able to go into the house and should be able to ask for forgiveness.
अरु नमता पानी बाडेको, कारपेट छौको डुप्लिकेट होत्यू?
And all these signs of humility by distributing things or laying the carpet is like a duplicate humility.
तेलेकदा म, अलिकति बिगलाई प्रचार गर्छ।
And that's why I preach differently.
एक्खिपको सिकसैन्त्यू, घरमा गर डकडक गरेर?
At least try once, go and knock at the, knock at the door of the house.
माले गरेकोछु?
Because I have done so.
गैंटोकमा?
In Gantu.
हाम्रो डेविड सुब्बा हुनुहुंछ?
And there was a brother called David Subha.
अब लाम हुन्छ, वाले मनारा काम रहनुहै?
And even though it will take a long time, he asked me to do a job.
अनि त्यो काम गर्नुमा गए।
And I went to do that job.
अनि माले अरुको कान बड़ा सुनी।
And I heard from other people.
अनि त्यो कामको लागि जी पोलिटिकल अप्रोच चाहिदरस्स?
And for that job to be done, we need some kind of political people involvement.
अनि माले सोचे त्यो काम नहुनेरस्स?
And I thought that work won't be done.
अनि घरमा है?
And I came back to home.
अनि वहाँको घरमा पेपर जी मलाई दिन?
And I came back and gave that paperwork to him.
Mala da kasali political approach launu basa, bane ke na?
There was no need of people that should, some political people must be involved with me.
Tar mali su nekatiye.
But I have heard that.
Tar mali aar bane, uncle, mala halla halla manchili bane, political approach launu basa re.
Ane I told uncle, I said, uncle, I have heard this way that there, there must be some kind of political involvement for this job.
Ane mali paper jima laai.
And I, I gave the paperwork to him.
Ane waale uncha uncha, bhai ti mo gharialcha bhanu vaay.
And he said like, it's okay brother, I will do it myself.
Alikati jhurtiye tisma, twist karera bane ke tiyo.
And there was a little bit of lies.
Ame rakan banyo.
And my work is done.
Madha pulpit bada bachandhi ne mancho.
Because I share the word from the pulpit.
Tena mala, mo, hedra, Palder Stadium ma aipuke, Gangtok ma Palder Stadium bane cha.
And I came to the place called Palder Stadium.
Tena hoda, tar mala etti sarah shanti va.
And when I came to that point, I was so unpissful.
Tedi wala D L Modi ko kitap paddethe ma.
And at that time, I was reading a book written by D L Modi.
Tiyo D L Modi ko kitab ma es to lehge rasa.
In that book written by D L Modi, it is, it is written like so.
Jhut bolne bani, savne kasari chhutkara paun ne.
If you have the habit of speaking lies, how can you get rid of it?
Jhut there prakar ko huncha.
Because there are different kinds of lies.
Koi wala garden ma, etru etru, kansi amla es to saapni chincha.
And sometimes in the garden, we see a very small snake.
Tar ota lekwe la ma nikke thulo dekhijche, etru dekhijche.
But when, in that, in that situation, we see very that small snake, also a little bit bigger.
Ke bhaaya, ke bhaaya, aurka le so de bane, saap tiyo, saap.
And if somebody comes and asks us, what happened? And we will say, there was a snake.
Ane tiyo paristhi tila gomir bhanu, nikke thulo the, nikke thulo the, ota lekwe da nikke thulo bhaai cha.
And in order, in that situation, we will make that very small snake, a very big one.
Saapai, sachen naapun, ji gane lajatra mati.
And if we actually measure, it would be like an earthquake only.
Teri da exageration ko pap bhancha.
And that is the sin of exaggeration.
Teri da badai chadai garu bhanu.
And we will make and build those things up.
Ane D L Modi le es to lehge rasa.
And D L Modi wrote like this.
Timile ghaaf ma nikke thulo kura garra, kee kura badai chadai garai.
If you are speaking or in a highly manner, or if you are built of things.
Timile tiyo kurala mazhaale, polished lagara, dhaate ko huncha, li, algo banaa ko huncha.
And maybe you have polished and you have risen the standards and you have spoken some lies.
Tiyo jhut hoti, bada chhutkara paun ne, ji, timi tey jaha ma fir jano parshakudera.
And in order to get rid of that sin, you have to go back to that very place where you have committed that.
Dasu bhai mo fir aai, far ke rai aale.
And I came back and I said, brother, I have, dasu, I have come back here.
Mali jhut bolai.
I have spoken lies.
Saapchi gane lajatra mati tiyo.
Truly, the snake was like an earthquake.
Mali etru sa bane.
But I have told it was big.
Mali jhut bolai, mala maap kar dinus.
Please forgive me, I have, because I have spoken lie.
Khalkal pasina hosa ki aandena, bhanus sab jali.
Is it not so that you are sweating?
Yaan dekhi, gari gari garu sakda na tiyo kura.
And after that, you won't repeat if you have done like this.
Taraj, jab bani manchili jhut bolcha, gamandli garada bolai ko huncha bhanjatiye, Bible le.
The Bible says that when a person will speak lies, it will be done because of the pride only.
Jack up garera, alik uchala, alik badara bana, bana bhancha, manche Adam ko santanta.
And because we are the descendants of Adam, we, we want to build things up and we want to say.
Ane jab manili nu pare bane dekhijchi, fir ishay tan karad du taun sakta, muka Bible bhaade dekhaun.
And when we have to accept, then the angel from Satan will come to us.
Kunai bani pap garu bana, agadi paila gaman huncha.
In order to, before committing any kind of sin, the pride will come.
Tar manili nu bana, agadi fir ishay tan karad du taun sakta.
But before accepting, an angel from Satan will come again.
Tesh ko naamchi Sharma, Sharma, same.
And that is the angel of shame.
Ti lu te huncha.
It would be a very lenient.
Paila gamandle unee nikke thulo bolio, aar gamandhi banaun cha.
The angel of pride would be little bit stronger and it helps to pop us up.
Tesh ko duty gaisakhi, fir era lu te aunscha.
And after he has done his duty, a very lenient thin will come.
Lo kee nira sa, hi to pad esko kitap, ekadek ma unus.
And kindly come to book of Proverbs, chapter eleven, we want to confirm this from the word of God.
Ekadek dui pad.
Chapter eleven, verse two.
Jab gamand aunscha.
Jab gaman aunscha.
Taba Sharma bani aunscha.
Ane.
Tar namrata ru sangha buddhi huncha. Enos, satani mala enos, gaman aiseh bsi jhut bolai, athava kee kura badara baneo.
And when the pride came, he jacked up things and he made up things and he spoke lies.
Gamand aayo, alikati rough, rough prakale bolio.
And because of pride, he spoke a little bit rough.
Ab budi la alikati chhikke gochho.
And maybe he hurt his own wife.
Budi laam chhikke gochho.
And maybe a husband is also guilty.
Kitchen ma garo bana, theng theng baray alikati.
In the kitchen, they banged some dishes.
Tar halakarnu vaacha, ghar ma shanti huncha.
We cannot make any noise because it would be an abusive situation.
Tar ti budi le, budi le, sari bano pare bane, sahaydan le aar huncha, laaj huncha, na bana sari, laaj huncha, na bana sari.
But, but if we have to say sorry to each other, then the angel of Satan will come, don't say so because it is a shameful thing to do.
Teri da garada, pap gari sahbsi, galti gari sahbsi, sari bana na saai karchi, ti Sharma le tabala fir aar, Sharma laksha, Sharma laksha, na bana, laaj huncha, timi ta chhosh ko thulo manchili, es te tru bachandde ko bana ra, ukshaa dinse fir.
And that's why we cannot say sorry because after we committing a sin because of pride or speaking lie, the angel will come, angel of shame would come. And don't say so because you are like an elder and yesterday only you have said so and so in the word of God.
Teri da bhanus, tabala manili nu na di ne, ti lu te ko naam kee recha, tedi mari bhanus. Same bhanus.
Ah, same.
Teri da manchilai, sari bano che, pasina khalkal huncha.
And that's why people find so difficult just to say sorry.
Boru, desko national anthem gaydi, bhanu gaydin cha talay.
But he or she is willing to sing the national anthem of the country.
Ghar orri pari gomeraa jana aunscha.
And if they are, if you ask them to go around the house, he or she will do so.
Sari bana sakda na.
But they cannot say just a simple word, sorry.
Manche ko, manchilai, gamandli mati pray deko huncha.
Because the pride lifts a human being up.
Abai aami kati ere ne, esko baray ma.
How much more we can see from, on, on regards to this sin.
Bolii bani eda pata cha.
And there is a different portion tomorrow, which we will be seeing also.
Eda davai batay rakchu.
I am just going to tell you about one thing.
Ghar ma janos.
Please do go at your home.
Ghar ma tabala ma hai, agar lea koiya.
And surely God has brought you here lovingly.
Mere chhara, sari, sappai kura thike cha.
My son, my daughter, everything is okay.
Jarra ma chali, kati jarra ram chaai na.
Maybe the root is a little bit infected.
Aja dehi jarai kardiun.
Let us cut the root from today onwards.
Tabali ghar ma garo bhanus, prabhu, ma ek namrako gamandhi reshu.
And go back and sit where house, Lord, I am a number one person who is full of pride.
Mala namrata banaunus.
Please do make me humble.
Imandhari ko saath ma bhanus.
Honestly, you speaks like this.
Imandhari ko saath ma prathna varu, prabhu le shabbash, maap dinu cha.
And please honestly come to the Lord and pray and the Lord will say, well done, and he will forgive you.
Yo chhi, naya baato, joodo baato, bhanus sab jali.
And this is the new way and living way.
Naya baato, joodo baato, bhanus.
Naya baato, joodo baato.
Naya baato, bane ko cha, athavat, dhire koi enek chaai na.
And new way, it is so that nobody, not many have walked before in that way.
Jesus Christ hinu va, ekli jana mati enek ho.